Are you saying as the Harare City Council, you have run out of land?
I will agree that we have run out of land.
You have run out of land? You have allocated people until you have no more land to allocate?
The land that we have is not adequate. We have run out of land. We have run out of land, Mr. Chair. I agree.
This is a normal state allocation happening. Your office is now redundant.
That's why... We are still allocating.
Where are you getting it from when you've run out of it?
Applications are being made to government to convert certain usable open spaces for...
Are you allocating those before you get the answer from government?
No.
So where are you getting the land to allocate the land you are allocating if you have run out of land?
It has been mainly from regularisation channel. Very few land has been or stands are being created on land designated residential.
This is the regularisation that we've all agreed in this room is unlawful, was done in a corrupt manner and benefited people along party lines. This is the main source of land to people right now?
Yes, which was done out of invasions.
No, I think I'm done. Thank you for tuning into Zim Newsbeat TV. It is the culture that is now prevalent, that is the status quo within the Harare City Council, that you all buckle under the pressure of the councillors and the mayor to the detriment of the law and the interests of Harare citizens.
I will not say that general statement.
You...
Answer the question.
You...
Answer the question. Is that pressure that causes you to do things which others have not done?
No, no.
But I told you what you said. You said the pressure for you to get away from the mayor. I don't want to change this.
In the lease agreement that we were to come up with...
No, answer the question.
Yes.
Remember, it's all stake things.
Yes. My point, Chairman, is that we conform to the dictates of procedure and of the law.
Pressure is coming from the mayor, not from you. That's correct.
In this instance, yes.
You live in perpetual... Let me put it this way, you live in terror of the councillors and policymakers, including the mayor, because they are quite able to influence whether or not you are employed there or not.
Yes, they...
Yes, okay. So now, this is a situation that you obviously would implore those above the commission to change. The city cannot function like this.
It will make work and life much easier.
Now, this dovetails into the point that I want to raise now. And I just want to recap for you, because it is now a few months ago that you gave evidence before this commission. Let me just recap some of the issues you indicated. The first one. You were asked, I remind myself then as the evidence leader. Now, information in the public domain and sometimes found in press is that councillors use benefits those they perceive as their supporters. That councillors use these to benefit those they perceive as their supporters in their political parties. And these, we were referring to stands that had been made available through regularisation. You still recall that?
I recall.
Yes, and you still abide by that, that councillors made use of the regularisation process to benefit their political supporters?
What I indicated that time was the regularisation process or the creation of those stands. It went through circulation, where councillors were supposed to append their signatures.
At this moment, I'm merely recapping what is record. And the record of what transpired then was that you admitted before this commission that councillors used stands derived from the regularisation process to benefit their supporters, their political party supporters.
It was possible, although I cannot...
You didn't say that. It's really from the record. You remember that.
Your response was, "I wouldn't dispute that"?
Yes. I said I wouldn't dispute that, because...
So, meaning that you agree.
Meaning that it's very possible.
Meaning that you agree, it was the assessment.
I agree.
You seem to be pre-variating. I'll move on to the next point. You indicated then that this involvement of councillors in the direct allocation of stands, which was your purview, destabilised the functions of your office. You recall that?
I recall.
You still stand by that?
I stand by it.
Very well. Then, and I want to read straight from the record. Now, I quote, "Now, you will agree that in the past five years, your councillors have benefited from the sale of land beyond the stands that they allocated in their own constituencies." And before you answer that evidence, will be presented to the commission and those who signed for the allocation, the allocation well known by the commission. I re-ask the question, "In the past five years, councillors have been allocated land and bought it, which is not land in their own constituencies, which they are not allowed at law." You recall that question?
I recall.
And your response was that that was true?
I had also explained... I agree, but can I also explain?
You already said what you said.
That's what I said.
I was just doing that as a recap of the evidence you gave in this court, because it will lead on to the next person, which is, and the final issue we'll deal with you about. That is the issue of cluster homes. What is your role in that process as the director of housing?
My role is very minimal, because the creation of stands meant for cluster homes, it falls within the purview of the town planning department. My role as the housing director is minimal, because you may find that an individual who have been allocated a stand can then initiate the process of creating cluster homes, and that falls within the department of urban planning.
I have asked about your role, not others. What is your role?
I basically have no role to play. If we are allocating a cluster, a cluster, a stand for clusters, it will have to go through council.
You say that your role was minimal. Now you're saying you have no role.
Yes.
These two are irreconcilable. Minimal means there is a role, and then when you say no role, there is not even the minimal role you speak of.
My only role is when I give a 4,000 square metre stand, that stand can subsequently be divided into clusters, which I have no role to play.
When it is divided into clusters?
Yes.
And there is stand allocation of those clusters. Are you not involved?
I'm not, because it will now be a private property.
Very well. So, you are telling this commission that there are no plans at all when you do land allocation yourself for cluster homes?
Normally, if there are those stands, they are given to a developer, who we have to seek authority from council to give a single developer.
You allocate those stands?
I do allocate.
So you allocate stands that are used for clusters?
For clusters and flats.
Very well. Now, Harare residents have noticed the proliferation of cluster homes, and they are concerned that perhaps the city is not able to offer basic amenities that ordinarily should because of the mushrooming of household units. Right? You are aware of that?
I am aware.
Right. What is the plan that you have in place to control that? Why is the proliferation of this? Why are you allocating these cluster stands on the scale that you are?
I'm not allocating any such stands for cluster homes. As I indicated, these are the formerly big stands, which individual owners are now applying to subdivide into clusters.
But you have said you also allocate cluster stands yourself?
We... I do, but we haven't been allocating any such stands during the period that I have been in council.
Very well. Yes, you may not be directly involved. Sorry, let me just follow on that. And which period have you been in council?
May 2017 to present.
So your evidence before this commission is that throughout the duration of that period, no stands have been allocated directly as cluster homes, but that all the cluster homes that we see come out of stands that did not come through that process?
I confirm.
This is now a period of about, what, seven years?
Seven years.
And in the seven years that you have been there, has there been a discussion amongst you directors as to the proliferation of these cluster homes and its effects, vis-à-vis the fact that you yourself as a department have not allocated any in seven years?
That discussion has been held. In fact, there was a stakeholder consultation meeting that was also held at Town House, where we profiled the interested stakeholders, particularly from areas of Greendale, Vinona and Borodale, which areas were experiencing a proliferation of this conversion of single dwelling units into cluster homes. That discussion was indeed held.
And stakeholders expressed concern about this?
They did.
But despite this concern, you have carried on as a city council allocating these clusters, whether it's your department or anyone else, unadmitted. The stakeholders' concerns have not been taken into account?
I wouldn't say there haven't been, because out of that discussion, the town planner is now mindful of the concerns of residents and the impact it is having on not only sewer and water reticulation infrastructure, but even the availability of ancillary facilities like schools, because ordinarily, for every 500 stands, there must be a primary school. But densification can now result in more housing units created without the facilities being also available.
And this anomaly actually affects your duties as well as a director, because the persons or entities that you are allocating these stands are prejudiced because of these anomalies that you have just mentioned.
There is pressure on existing services.
Mr. Chairman, I have with me a document that I forced to put in your record. This is a moment in Africa from the Corporate Developers Association of Zimbabwe. It will be used again when we have brought the mayor back. But I just wanted you to be aware of it now for the next question that I'm going to ask, without necessarily going through it. You are aware of what I'm... Now. Thank you. Now, in this stakeholders' meeting that you speak of, a pertinent point was raised, which naturally should be of concern not only to you, but to red payers as well. Is that this process of allocation of stands for cluster houses involves councillors?
Yes.
And that part of the process of this allocation of these cluster houses is that councillors are actually involved in site visits and inspections of proposed cluster developments?
Where there is...
I am sorry. For interest of time, I'm going to interrupt you and redirect you to the question that I've asked. And that what came out of your meeting from stakeholders, including Property Developers Association of Zimbabwe, is that the process of allocation of cluster development properties involves councillors in respective wards who carry out site visits on those proposed developments?
Yes, during the circulation process, the local councillor and the district officer of that area, they sign off before it comes to commit.
You haven't answered the question. They get involved.
They get involved.
They get involved. And that, this is a process in terms of the technical sighting of those cluster homes that shouldn't involve councillors.
But it doesn't remove the role that the planner must play?
Redirect you to the question. The technical assessment of the sites, etc., is not within the purview of civilian councillors who are untrained in this field.
It's not.
Shouldn't involve them.
It's not.
Now, I'll move on. The concerns that were raised in that meeting is that this proliferation of cluster homes is an issue that is benefiting councillors in their personal capacities.
I am not able to make a comment.
I am saying the issue was raised.
Yes, it was.
And the issue was raised that these councillors, who have the power to yea or nay a project like that, then have a situation whereby they can extort funds from proposed developers for those?
It's possible.
It was raised. It was raised in that meeting. Answer.
It was raised.
Now, if I were to suggest to you that of course there is this proliferation of stands, because councillors, part of the reason is that councillors are benefiting personally from this process through means that are outside the law, by extorting from developers to be allowed to build.
Sorry, if you can cast your question.
I'd like your comment on that.
The proliferation of clusters, to me, is a need-driven occurrence, where people are desirers for accommodation. If some of the developers are now being extorted by councillors because they are anxious to commence their development, I'm saying it's possible, but the intention would be to meet an identified need out there.
No, it's not about need. There is need for houses. Can we build cluster homes in this yard, for instance? It's not about that.
There are certain standards which the town planner...
Thank you. Now, are you saying as the Harare City Council, you have run out of land?
I will agree that we have run out of land.
You have run out of land? You have allocated people until you have no more land to allocate?
The land that we have is not adequate. We have run out of land. We have run out of land, Mr. Chair. I agree.
This is a normal state allocation happening. Your office is now redundant.
That's why... We are still allocating.
Where are you getting it from when you've run out of it?
Applications are being made to government to convert certain usable open spaces for...
Are you allocating those before you get the answer from government?
No.
So where are you getting the land to allocate the land you are allocating if you have run out of land?
It has been mainly from regularisation channel. Very few land has been or stands are being created on land designated residential.
This is the regularisation that we've all agreed in this room is unlawful, was done in a corrupt manner and benefited people along party lines. This is the main source of land to people right now?
Yes, which was done out of invasions.
No, I think I'm done. Thank you, Chairman. Just to recap on the points that were made previously and now. You confirm that every street is no digital housing unitist?
There is none.
It's all paper-based and filed?
It's manual.
And it means obviously your plans for housing for Harare are not in any digital form or format?
Not yet. They are not yet digital.
Do you, as the director of housing, know how many houses are owned by Sito Farari? In terms of flats, mid-level density houses, high-density houses, low-density houses?
Eleven, just over 11,000, most of which are the hostels or flats in Mbari, where we have 5,532, but we have just over 11,000.
I ask this because in the evidence given by the mayor, number nine, John Chapman, had been abandoned 15 years in high court by a former employee. It was only recovered for the purposes of allocation to the mayor. Do you have enough records and information pertaining to the houses in the council?
We have the records, because nine Drummond was once occupied by the city planner of Sito Farari, who passed on some years ago. And his kids had continued staying at that house. So those records, we have them, and where the property will be in areas, we institute eviction orders, which are done through the courts and we rely on our legal. But the records of all the properties that I have cited, in spite of the challenge of non-digitalisation, we have those records in manual form.
So according to you, all the houses of residential properties owned by Sito Farari have leases and you have all the leases?
We have the leases. Maybe what I cannot vouch is that are the tenants who have the leases, are they the ones who are still in occupation of those properties? But we know all the properties that we have.
Okay, I ask this because the house in question was occupied by, like you said, an employee of Sito Farari.
Yes.
Now it's being occupied by a related official of ours, in line to occupy by a related person. Does this mean that all the employees of Sito Farari, that house was given by the city?
No.
So what is the motivation of giving that house to a related person?
As I indicated, this came, this was born out of a council resolution from the Human Resources and General Purposes Committee, not the Housing Committee. In fact, as housing, after we created regions, we intended it to be the offices for regional manager for Region One.
That's specifically us?
Yeah, an application has been made by the regional manager.
Now, you also told us that where land has been invaded, there's a process called regularisation.
Yes.
Now, where this land is being regularised, have you now come up with bills and utility statements for those areas as we speak?
The bills and utilities, one of the condition precedent was that the people must have obtained a certificate of occupation. And certificate of occupation is obtained when the project is all that is reflected on the designs. But because of the length of time it was taking, we are now giving certificates for parallel development, so that we quickly start charging the occupants of those areas. We had started opening accounts for just over 16,000 properties that had been regularised. So indeed, the process of opening accounts for those individuals is underway.
I ask because the red payers who are receiving account statements are subsidising those that are not resisting but enjoying the services. So to what extent can you tell us that you want in bringing these people up to your records, so to speak?
Those that are to be regularised, we are talking of 100 properties, yet we have only done about 16,000. Our properties that are in the billing system, we are talking of 322,000, yet we have around 400,000 properties. So, to a large extent, those... those that are being built are subsidising the eighty thousand odd residents that are not yet paying anything.
And what has been done to rectify this situation? Does it not motivate, give motivation to the ones that are actually paying?
C- c- council formed a regularisation task force and it is out of the regularisation task force efforts that these sixteen thousand have been now uploaded in the system. Because what we are ensuring we do is that individuals who are on properties that are not schools, that are not wetlands eh are then regularised and uploaded in the system. So eh whilst the pace may not be up to what we expect, but we are seeing over the period over sixteen thousand have been uploaded and we are hopeful that during the course of twenty twenty-five, we will make inroads in ensuring that the remaining number eh is regularised and also uploaded in our system.
How closely does it work with the states? They still have the other states?
Uh, quite closely because the State Department, they are the owners of the land. If eh there are any properties that are to be put in the system, we write to, to the State's Department.
I ask this because we've heard eh people tell us that there are city council properties which have leases from twenty sixteen to twenty fifteen that have not been updated. Where people are paying money, including fifty-five ninety-six dollars a month, but subsidies have been out for five hundred going up.
Um.
How often do you update leases to go over the common terms?
The lease agreements that I, I talked, I superintend over are for residential properties. Uh, city valuations is responsible for the churches and all other commercial eh properties. Those we don't really like. It is within the purview of our valuations department.
And then eh lastly, how many recreational parks are functional right now, high density areas of, of Arari? Where people can play soccer, or play sport, or walk around? How many are functioning right now as we speak?
Um, very few. Eh Glenora is still functional, although the condition that it is in will require improvement. But eh whilst they are there, we really need to improve for them to be functional.
You mentioned one, is it the only one functioning?
I, I can say that's the only one that is functional.
Noted areas, how many have you sold as Sito Farari?
We have sold.
Yes, recreational parks?
Uh, we have not sold any.
There's one Campbell Road in Vaymona where Sito has taken two quarter back residence. And eh an individual came saying that they bought it.
Um, you are probably referring to eight Campbell Road. Uh, it's, it's not a park eh close to eh Pomona shops. If that is the one that eh you are referring to, it, it wasn't a park.
And the one on Baumoral Road in Vaymona, where there's now a church that runs out of recreational park? They put a tent in to swings?
Uh, as you, as I earlier indicated, leases for churches is done by, by our valuations department, but eh we...
Are these amenities that fall within your portfolio?
They are.
So I'm asking, as to... Can you tell us today under the, not so recreational status, under the guise of change of use?
No, we have not. We have not. It may be Baumoral, it may be that it is now being used for something else, but we have not disposed it.
Thank you, sir. I think, Chairman, you're saying the guy who's in the commission, just especially on regularisation. You talked about a circulation which takes place and that, or that circulation, I think, councillor signed.
Yes.
Indicating that they are, they want to disregularise.
It may be that they want or they don't want. They must make a comment on the proposal that will be made. So eh they can say, yes, I have no objection, or they will put a condition.
Where will the proposal come, coming from?
It will be coming from town planning.
It will be coming from town planning?
Yes.
And eh, like as already stated, councillors, then you say together with district officers?
District officers, yes.
As one who then say yes or no, that's, that?
They, they will make their comments.
All right, now will these circulations end up in council?
Yes.
For the council resolution?
Yes.
So if we, if we asked you, you'd be able to supply the commission with the resolutions of council regularising all those pieces later?
Yes.
Indicating eh the process they went through?
The town, the town planning department has all the documents because it goes through the Works and Town Planning Committee.
No, but I'm saying the, the resolution doesn't come from a committee, from a committee which is, which you yourselves eh 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 have worked with the housing, in one year starting to do the housing?
Eh, it starts from town planning.
And then?
Then it comes to housing for the actual allocation once the regularisation has been endorsed by council.
So it's possible that when you're department, you're able to get this information on the this actual resolutions, regularising these sixteen thousand properties at the, the stents?
Uh, that would be from Works and Town Planning. What then comes eh from housing will be the authority to allocate the regularised stents. Yes.
So councillors are the ones who resolve?
They are the ones that...
On properties to be, to be regularised?
Yes.
And that should, even if you have a chamber secretary, you may forget that those kind of resolutions?
They are, yes.
Right, then you mentioned something a bit disturbing, uh, Mr. Nkaiye. Where you say, only sixteen thousand stands, you are not going for parallel development. That you correct.
You had me correct, yes.
And you are aware of challenges we faced because of parallel development in this country?
I'm...
If you want to explain to us what is the need by parallel development?
Eh, parallel development is where we are saying eh we are putting in the services whilst eh people also be putting up the superstructures. And, and why we ended up eh, eh consenting to this eh abnormality was because these pieces of land had already been occupied. Superstructures were there without the requisite amenities.
Yeah, but in some of these cases, we are, we are aware that some of the superstructures were nothing more than here cabins, which were put in place to, to facilitate regularisation. We have very, very good evidence to that, in fact.
Quite a number of areas have cabins and eh we can only eh evict people through a court process once they've been in occupation for a day or two. So that's the legal challenge that we always face.
You are aware of the concept of dysfunctional settlement the country is facing right now in places like Arari South, Kalimoni and so on, you are aware of that?
I'm aware.
And you are now creating the same phenomenon in this city, with sixteen thousand states, where people have no water, have no sewer, have no roads, and you are saying build your houses whilst we are providing infrastructure, which more often than not will never provide?
These are...
We are already cleaning the services, those areas which are already constructed.
We are organising these areas into pay schemes. We are relying on the resources of the individuals to put in their services.
There's a follow-up on this, Chairman. This occupation we're talking about, we're talking about eh unlawful occupations.
Unlawful occupations.
And you are allowing people to build without a sofa on unlawful occupations? Is that correct?
That's correct eh, we...
And you are encouraging people to pay the council when they are lawful occupying places? Is that true?
We, Chairman, we have several court orders to demolish.
Not all of that, but is that proper?
No, it's not proper.
Like this court order that we have had to demolish?
Ah, to demolish.
Have you, have you demolished?
We demolished and, but eh when we then liaised with the government, I think we were asked to stop the demolitions.
But you demolish the orders, what orders say? Did you say, let the government say demolish?
The court order says demolish channel.
Why then will you say that was on another authority from government?
I think the minister of local government is on record saying you shall not demolish until eh without consultation.
But you created this problem. You allow people to build without lawful occupation? Isn't it?
The challenge that we have...
You answer the question, I'm not talking about the challenges. You went ahead and authorised and did this to people who are applying as if they're lawful, whether they're not?
They are not lawful and we did not encourage them in any way.
But I, I provided them with these services. You are trying to interpretize that?
That's what we are trying to do.
So you are acting unlawfully, aren't you? Isn't it correct?
Chairman, these individuals, they start doing work during the weekends.
It's very simple, during the weekend or at night, but the whole day you stay there. Isn't it? So you stay there, ignore and it is met times?
Once they've...
Is that what happens?
It's because once there's evidence...
No, is that what happens? You find out that they're ready to fight and you disinteract?
That's what we are now doing through the regularisation.
Okay.
Yes.
But you are conscious that we, what you are doing, if you have not done that in the past?
We are quite aware.
Was it for political reasons?
Hmm, I wouldn't want to say so, it wasn't.
Why, why was it?
It was eh being pragmatic because we were looking at eh people who had invaded large tracts of land whom we could not just remove eh without providing alternative land as required by the law.
Do you have a housing list?
Housing waiting list?
Yes, housing waiting list.
We have it.
Why do you remove, why do you remove and then put those in the waiting list?
I'm, I'm not very clear with, with your suggestion, Chairman.
Why?
I'm saying...
I'm saying that you have got housing waiting list, okay?
Yes.
People who have properly applied for them.
Yes.
You have got steps. Someone moves in overnight. You now decide to put the legal supplier ignoring those who have come into the lawful channels? Isn't it?
That's what has been happening.
It's why it's illegal.
We're not doing that. Eh, it's only that the law dictates that when someone has slept on that piece of property, you can only evict through a court order.
Yes, which you obtained.
Which we have obtained, we have quite a number.
So you are preparing to say that? Yes eh, it is one issue that I need, need, need to be clarified where I believe if left unclarified, it may amount to passing the buck. Um, I just want to concentrate on the demolitions um that were in the press, which everybody saw. Um, you confirm that these demolitions involved mainly houses that have been complete, in some stages, two-storey house?
Some houses were complete, others were perimeter walls.
That's what the question is.
Yes.
Yes, they were complete, right? And these... Nobody shaking your head, I'm not, I'm not in... These were complete houses.
Yes.
Which would have taken some time to complete.
Yes.
And in some of those houses, people were already living there.
Yes.
And this is, has been, has been, had been eh under circumstances where council knew that those houses were there.
Yes.
Where council knew that those houses were built or acquired illegally.
Yes.
And yet they were allowed to complete them?
Because they had...
Yet they were allowed to complete them? The reasons will talk later on.
Yes.
Yes, they were allowed to complete. Wouldn't you agree then that council became complicit in that illegality?
No.
You watched it? You let it happen? Is that not complicity?
We were taken to court by those individuals.
You won. You had orders. And they took you to court because they had finished building?
No.
Why didn't you stop them from carrying on? You could have gotten an order.
The order that was there was actually stopping council from doing anything on, on its line.
We have been through that, those orders that were there had been received because council had not opposed them in court. There were orders by consent.
For Belvedere?
There were orders by consent. Is it not true?
I don't think it's true.
Why are you not saying, no, it's not true? Because evidence has been given here. And if you maintain that it's not true, I'm going to ask, this commission, they asked you to go and bring all those orders and find if you are telling the truth.
Maybe our chamber secretary, the legal, hmm? Hmm.
You and I will be kind.
Hmm.
You know that those orders were by consent, the majority of them.
For Belvedere, no.
Belvedere, the only place.
There are quite a number of areas where we have court orders to demolish.
To make is that you were as guilty as the illegal land builders. You then sought to demolish the properties of people who you had consented to build. That is why government intervene. It is one accused person purporting to enforce the law on his co-accused person.
The consent that comes from council for want to build is on an approved eh plan. If you have no approved plan, you have no consent from council to build.
These orders that you were seeking to implement, were they contemporaneous with their being granted in court? Let me make it simpler for you.
Yeah.
Those orders had been sitting in the shelves for a long time before you sought to implement them. Is that not true?
It's true.
So it means then, as is suggested by the chairman, there were other reasons, perhaps political, even criminal, why those orders were dusted off the shelves and sought to be implemented at the time that the council chose? You will refer to that if you don't dispute?
I have no answer to that, given that it's in another department.
You are part of management, you have no answer because what I'm saying is true. You cannot pass the buck on any other entity, government or otherwise. It is your problem that you created by being complicit in illegality and then you sought to portray yourselves as the innocent party when you were just as guilty as council.
I have no comment to that.
Just to, to Mr. Negay, what, what Mr. Mof is talking about, according to the heavyweights issue?
Yes.
Remember there was a court order obtained by heavyweights, undefined by council? Do you remember that issue? Musasa, eh, was given land properly by council?
No, it wasn't.
Who was?
Heavyweights were given land properly by council.
They obtained the order by default?
Uh, it was Musasa.
It was there now?
Eh, Musasa is on the ground.
It was whatever the order?
I'm told it was unopposed-
By Sito Farah?
By Sito Farah.
That's what Mr. Mof is saying, it's only what we own now.
Why did you oppose? Why didn't you oppose?
I'm not sure if it was served to us. Eh, again, these are issues that come through our legal division.
No, but you are the director of, you say these structures are definitely, that's what the department-
If we had been made aware of it, we would have opposed it, Chairman.
So now you're saying that you are not aware of what is happening in your department?
The, when that application came, we were not made aware of it. The structures. We, we were aware and we reported the matter to the police.
How long have you been a director?
In Sito Farah?
Yes.
Eh, seven years.
We are advised that political service amounts, is that, we are entitled to a vision and, or indeed, once in, is that true?
It is true.
How many times have you been out in the country, on holiday, your wife, or any other, women, others, including three others? I say so.
Oh, 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 one, oh, oh, once, Mr. Chairman, with my wife, eh, the one I am legally married to and kids. I went to Zanzibar. This December.
Then the other six years, you did not talk?
I did not go.
Why?
Eh... The man was not availed to, to us.
But they owe you money, but we're told yesterday that if you don't travel, it's going to be money. Is that true?
It is true.
So how much I owe?
Hmm... My previous contract which ended, I was, I was only given seven thousand five hundred for that entire period. Eh, because it, for each year, it was, eh, two thousand five hundred.
So you were given in arrears?
I was given in arrears, but it was cut.
Two thousand?
Two thousand, yes. Two thousand, yes. That's what I-
Are we given that?
The, the, I'm still to receive, Chairman.
How much I paid?
Ah... Eh, not of eight thousand from the papers that I availed to, to finance.
We wanted you to confirm that. Then, eh, on another issue, do you sit in the human resources and general purpose committee meetings?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Confirmed that, eh, eh, human resources and general purpose committee meeting, sorry, committee was reconstituted, uh, in January twenty twenty-five by the mayor?
We, it was reconstituted, yes.
Okay.
All committees.
And that was during the time this commission had been set up?
Yes.
You confirmed that on twenty eighth, January twenty twenty-five, an induction meeting was conducted, eh, which was to indact human resources and general purpose committee members. Confirmed that?
Confirmed.
You were in attendance?
I was not, but I was represented from my department.
So the purpose was to indact them, isn't it?
Yes.
Were they permitted to also amend the terms of reference, to your knowledge?
Eh, terms of reference are crafted by chamber secretary and they were presented to them. Eh, unfortunately, because I was not part of, eh, that process, I cannot comment, but given that the chamber secretary will be coming before this committee, he will competently comment on that.
Okay. Just, maybe look at this document, go to, eh, I'm trying to exhibit seventy-four, term of reference number five. Can you quickly read it?
Development of human resources structure and establishment in conformity with Sito Farare's strategy and budget.
Okay, go on to number ninety.
To consider proposals for dismissal of employees on the grounds of redundancy or some other substantial reasons, or expiry of fixed term contracts.
Number twenty.
To consider proposals for major organizational changes.
Number twenty-two.
Approval of compensation for loss of office, that is, payments not required by the contract of employment.
Okay, thank you. We have evidence on record that, that those terms of reference were incorporated into the already existing terms of reference in order to fix my witness's weird test fit before this commission. What would be your comment?
Hmm... At first value, eh, I see no real sinister motive, eh, from those, eh, terms of reference. Eh, that would be my immediate, eh, reaction, because even without those eh, terms of reference amplified as they have been done, I believe, eh, the human resources and GPC committee, it is within their purview to do that.
And, and number thirty-two? Read it loudly.
To consider matters concerning buildings owned or released by the council for use by councilors and municipal staff as accommodation for the latter unless it is designated as quarters.
Okay. This was included. Was it not part in, part of looting council property? Because councilors are not allowed to be, they are not entitled to accommodation from council?
Yeah, it would be, it varies with that terms of reference. I think, eh, it will not even be under human resources and general purpose committee.
We are aware that that is the-
It's part of, part of, eh, looting of council property, because this is not permissible, isn't it?
Wait, maybe if you look at that one, say, yeah.
Hmm.
Is that not so, Mr. Negay?
Yeah, I think that terms of reference, Chairman, must be expanded from-
Why? Does this, does this sit well with you?
No, it doesn't sit well with, with me.
Why?
Because it's not, eh, within the purview of human resources and general purposes committee.
Then one will give, forgive and forgive that it's a device for looting.
Indeed, one will be forgiven for thinking that.
So I will, I will advise you not to implement that, those solutions whenever you are called to do so, because it is unlawful. If you do so, you may face, face consequences, do you are-
I agree, I understand.
Thank you so much. And from just last word, from your experience, when someone is building a house and when a house is being inspected, I'm just trying to paraphrase, do you agree that every stage of the inspection is paid for?
Yes. The visit is paid for.
Is paid for?
Yes.
So if there is no evidence that, eh, eh, inspection was not paid for or inspections were not paid for, that would be unlawful?
It will be.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Now, if you just finish reading, if you want to change, eh... You want to reduce it, change your proof. If you have a house and you want to change it, what comes first? Are you allowed to, to build, then apply, or apply, then, or change your proof?
It is the application that must be tendered first with council. Before, eh, eh, you apply to council, to the department of planning. Then the department, as I indicated earlier, the circulation to the district officer, to the councilor, to Zesa, to other, say, say, utility providers, including water, roads, all those must comment on that, on that application. If the application is favorable, then, eh, it will be presented to the committee. To the, to the works and town planning committee.
If it is, is rejected, you can't build?
If it is rejected, you can't build, eh, you can appear, eh, but you should not proceed with it.
Is it proper then to start building before you are building this?
It's, it's not proper. That, that's where the issues of regularization come. It's illegal. It's an illegal development.
What do you do then if that's, that's a challenge?
If, eh, that illegal development has occurred, someone is given forty-eight-hour notice to ensure that the illegality is corrected.
How to correct it if you've already built and you've not, you've not completed?
You, you have to dismantle the-
The property.
The property, so that you can salvage whatever materials are salvaged.
Yes. Have you done that of this?
I know there was one structure at the corner, Leamington and, eh, Arare Drive that was dismantled after it had been erected.
Which one? One double?
Uh, it wasn't double story, it was a shed by the Chinese.
And, eh, how was nine Sky Master Road?
Uh, that one I'm not aware of it, Chairman.
I can direct you to go and look at it. How was looking and dismantled?
Uh, development, we, we can dismantle although development control is under urban planning services.
Do you know who is owner?
Uh, no, I'm not aware.
You went by that?
You, you said the address-
Nine Sky Master in Belvedere.
In Belvedere?
Just nearby.
Oh.
Can you also check and see where the land was, it's paid for?
For the development?
Special, and bring the receipt on my name.
Okay.
The specific architect, was it, was it like how?
Okay.
I understand, there was a, even all the-
And nine-
The receipt showed that we did, was it that then we bring the audit, all the, all the, the campaign of that thing? We want to see where this is paid, isn't it, Mr.?
Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
And if there's any going to get an export? I suspect it is different so that we are aware of what is.
Of four nine Sky Master?
Yes.
Uh, this one I'm, I'm not aware.
So you don't mind being destroyed?
Eh, and illegality has to be rectified. Okay, thank you, thank, thank, thank you, sir.
Thank you for tuning into Zim Newsbeat TV.